I'm well and yourself?
Uh, Madam Deputy Sheriff, will you please call the meeting to order?
All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, this honorable county commissioners' meeting of Shelby County, Tennessee, is now open for the transaction of business pursuant to adjournment. All persons having business with this court draw near give attention and each shall be heard. Please remain standing.
All right, thank you, uh, for the invocation today. We have Pastor Darryl E. Pettis Jr., uh, the High Place Mount Pisgah Baptist Church. Uh, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and, and giving us the invocation this afternoon.
Yes, sir, my honor. Let us pray. Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent is your name. Wonderful is your name. Holy you are. Father, we thank you for the grace of this beautiful day. And Father, we pray that you would sanctify the space in which we're gathered in today and that you would bring every mind and every heart on one accord. We thank you for the, uh, commissioners. We thank you for the citizens. We pray that you will continue to strengthen and bless in that relationship as we conduct the business in which you've placed into our hands. So, Father, we pray that our serving today, serving this wonderful county and city, will be a blessing and a smile to your face. We pray now that the time that we spend together will be great in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, uh, Commissioner Morrison, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may be seated. Uh, Commissioner Caswell, would you do me a favor and, and, uh, Pastor Pettis, just one second before you sit down?
Let's say, uh, again, thank you, Chair, and just in honor of the county, I thought the pastor was gonna sing today because he is a magnificent singer, but thank you for your leadership in Shelby County. We want to present you this on behalf of the chairman of Shelby County Commission. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Clay Gibbs. Caswell. Sugarman.
Present.
Mills.
Present.
Ford. Wright. Bradford.
Present.
Thornton. Morrison.
Present.
Brooks. Lowry. Avent. Chairman Whaley.
Present.
We have seven presidents.
Okay, uh, we have a quorum. Can we get approval of the minutes of the previous session, uh, without objection? This is from May 19, 2025. Our hearing none. Those minutes are approved. It's possible to join the meeting in two ways, via the designated email account, voc.e-mail@shelbycountytn.gov, or via phone at 901-222-1234. Madam Parliamentarian, will you please read the rest of this rule?
Members of the public who desire to address the county commission shall request permission by completing an appearance card, which will be given to the chair by a deputy. Members of the public shall be permitted to address the county commission unless ruled out of order by the chair or denied the opportunity to speak by a majority vote of the commissioners' present and voting. Please note that as it pertains to public comment, our rules of order set a limit of no longer than three minutes when recognized by the chair. The chair may set a limit for discussion by the public of less than three minutes for each individual if circumstances require. Finally, to the members of the public, if you would like to express your pleasure or displeasure on a matter before the county commission, please do so by raising your thumb up or pointing it down as opposed to applause or other expressions of approval or disapproval. Disruptive members of the public are subject to removal from the commission chambers by the deputy sheriff. Thank you for your attention and in advance for your cooperation today.
All right, thank you so much. We have two commissioners that have birthdays this month. Commissioner Mills, uh, his birthday coming up on the 15th. Happy early birthday, Commissioner Mills. Uh, and Commissioner Thornton, who's not here yet with us, but Commissioner Thornton's birthday is coming up on the 27th of June, so happy birthday, uh, to our fellow commissioners. All right, Madam Parliamentarian, will you please read item number two?
Item two is a special resolution honoring Tennessee State Senator London Lamar for her years of service, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. The citation was deferred in May 19, 2025, commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, good afternoon, uh, Commissioner Sugarman. And Senator Lamar, good to see you. Commissioner Sugarman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. It is with great honor to present this resolution to Senator London Lamar. Whereas the Shelby County Board of Commissioners shall honor and recognize Tennessee State Senator London Lamar as she tirelessly devotes her life supporting and uplifting communities in Tennessee General Assembly as the youngest female and African-American legislator in the history of Tennessee Senate. And whereas Senator Lamar graduated from the top of her class from Central High School, the Central High School, in 2009, at Saint Mary's College in Notre Dame, Indiana. She graduated in May 2013 with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and double minors in Intercultural Studies and Sociology. And whereas she went and now serves as president and CEO of the L2 Company. And whereas she was elected in 2018 to represent District 91 in Tennessee House of Representatives until March 2022, when she was selected by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to serve the remainder of former Senator Katrina Robinson's term. Senator Lamar currently represents District 33 and is a member of the Finance, Ways and Means Committee and a member of the Judiciary Committee. She has made legislative victories on human trafficking prevention, voting rights, maternal health, and criminal justice reform. Whereas Senator Lamar is a member of the National Organization of Black-Elected Legislative Women, the National Caucus of State Legislators, and is an executive committee member of the National Black Caucus of State Legislators. She has been recognized by Tennessee Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers as Political Official of the Year and as Legislator of the Year by Nobel Women. Now therefore being resolved by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners that we hereby honor Senator London Lamar.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Um, it's an honor and a privilege to be recognized by you and our my fellow commissioners today. Um, overall, I just say this moment, um, especially having my son in my hand right now, is very telling of what I stand for as a senator from Memphis. Everything that I've done over the last 10 years is about creating a new generation because I truly believe that if Memphis prospered, our goal is to invest in our children and the future of our city, understanding that while we're serving now, we may not always receive the benefits of the hard work that we put into our politics. But I'm confident if we continue to put the next generation first, our children first, and continue to speak positively and proactively about the future of Memphis, this city would truly be one of the flagship cities of the United States. And it's because of the work that we do collectively that we could continue to put Memphis on the map. So I'm dedicated to continue to be Memphis' biggest advocate alongside my colleague, uh, leader Ramesh Akberry, who's here to make sure we're defending and standing up for Memphis at every moment we have at the state of Tennessee. And thank you all for those who won the commission last year for trusting me in this role, and I hope I'm making you proud. Thank you so much.
All right, uh, Senator, before we, before we let you go and you take some pictures, there are a few commissioners that want to share a word with you, so we'll go to the queue. Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I see a lot of names, so I had to scratch out this agenda instead of it saying consent agenda. I'm calling it the Central High School Consent Agenda. And anybody that is a sponsor on anything that deals with Central High School, consider yourself privileged. Yes, I can say that as an alum who graduated in 1996 from Central High School, and this is one of my students. Look, I can just come around the corner and give you accolades, so I won't go through the whole list. I'll let others, uh, do that, but, uh, it's good to see you, and like we say in the business, it's good to be seen. So, excuse me if I put a little bit more energy on the next item because I was actually part of this particular organization, but I can come around the corner and applaud you for everything that you do, so thank you for being here. I, you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Lowry?
Senator Lamar, just congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Nylan, what's up, little man? He's a staple just like you are, but you know, to have done so much at such a young age is just a testament to your leadership and your ability, and I look forward to see what you're gonna continue to do, uh, going forward. Memphis and Shelby County is better, uh, because you're in the seat you're in, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. Commissioner Caswell?
Senator, again, thank you for all that you do. As a new grandpa, father myself, my baby, grandbaby was born last month. I think about you and all that you do at the state level, fighting for maternal health and fighting for our women. I just thank you for the, your leadership in our county, so continue to do the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Bradford?
Senator Lamar, uh, thank you for your service. As you know, three years ago, this body had a tough decision, um, and I was pulled in to help make that decision, and so, uh, thank you for, uh, what you have done in that term, and, uh, please keep up the good work.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bradford. Uh, thank you again, Senator, for all your service, uh, and for being with us this afternoon. All right, uh, Madam Parliamentarian, will you please read item number three?
Item three is a special resolution honoring the Central High School Jazz Band, 2025 Essentially Ellington International Competition, sponsored by Commissioner Mikel Lowry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lowry, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, and, uh, fellow commissioners, and, uh, thank you all for this time. You know, um, when we have celebrations for students, even though they may be in one particular district, it's celebrated by the entire county. And I know we've had football teams here, we've had basketball teams here as well, but this time we get a chance to honor, uh, the Central High School Band for all the work they've done in winning first place in the competition in New York. I think that deserves a round of applause for that school as well. It's always good when, uh, someone can make us proud, uh, in Memphis. So just real quickly, whereas the Central High School Jazz Band was chosen, that's only one of 30 high school bands from around the world to perform at the Essentially Ellington High School Jazz Band Competition and Festival at Jazz Lincoln Center, New York City, where they made history as the first-place winners. Whereas, under the leadership of band director Ole Lidle? Dr. Ali Liddell, all right. The students played, practiced tirelessly and despite limited resources. Whereas the Memphis community came together and donated over 50,000 to send the band to New York, providing what could happen in the city supports of youth, right? Uh, 50,000, that's an amazing, uh, thing that the city was able to do as well. So while this achievement, uh, obviously she is based on hard work and dedication. This has brought pride to the Central High School and Memphis Shelby County schools and has brought pride to our entire county. I know we already mentioned that one commissioner's alum of this, uh, institution as well, so just want to say congratulations on behalf of Shelby County. Continue to do great work and continue to make Memphis and Shelby County proud, all right?
Thank you. Uh, the, thank you for this honor. Thank you for recognizing the hard work of me and my students, many of which have gone on to summer vacation and, and several places, um, and I'll be going shortly. But, but thank you so much. Thank you to the city of Memphis Shelby County for supporting us and, uh, especially financially and helping us get here, get to New York, and, uh, hopefully we could do this again next year.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Liddell. Uh, we have a commissioner in the queue to speak with you. Uh, Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and Dr. Liddell, congratulations to you and the Central High School Jazz Band. I remember when this gentleman got hired, and I remember the people that were before you and when we used to have our conversations down in the band room, and I would ask, what do you have in store for this city? I don't know if, uh, anybody else asked you that question, but all I know is everything that I've seen that you have done, I go back to when I was in the band in, well, 93 to 96 with the Jazz Band in 96, and I will say that, uh, Ms. Epps, don't let this man get away. Because his stock has gone up. I only got one question for you, Mr. Liddell. I haven't been in that band room in a, in a, in a while. Now, I know for nostalgia purposes, in order to get great people to be part of the Central High School marching band and jazz band, you have to show, uh, the past. Y'all still don't have my picture down there with the?
Your picture is still on the wall, Mr. Ford. You can see it when you walk in, t- straight ahead. Matter of fact, it's the biggest picture in there is your class.
I believe you. I have nothing else to say, uh, Chairman. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Uh, would you like to, uh, say a few words? Oh, you already, anymore? Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and congratulations. That's a really big deal, um, and you, when you think about how many schools compete in it, so, um, well done, and, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Uh, Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number four.
Item four is a special resolution honoring Tennessee State Senator Ramesh Akberry for her years of service, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
All right, good afternoon again. Commissioner Sugarman, you have the floor.
And colleagues, it's with special honor to present this resolution to Senator Ramesh Akberry. Whereas Tennessee State Senator Ramesh Akberry shall be recognized and honored by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners for years of service as an advocate for justice and equality as she serves District 29 in the Tennessee Senate. And whereas, born on April 14, 1984, Senator Akberry is a graduate of Washington University in St. Louis and St. Louis University School of Law. A proud Mepian, she was elected to represent District 91 in Tennessee House of Representatives in 2013 special election before joining the Tennessee Senate five years later. Whereas Senator Akberry aims to create policies that expand middle-class security, improve student outcomes, reform outdated criminal justice laws, and most importantly, to provide countless opportunities for Tennesseans from all walks of life. And whereas Senator Akberry is the minority leader of the Tennessee Senate and second vice-chairwoman of the Senate Education Committee. She is also a member of the Ethics Committee, the Commerce and Labor Committee, and the Calendar Committee. And whereas Senator Akberry is a proud member of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, the Links Incorporated. She serves as board member of the National Civil Rights Museum, Emerge Tennessee, and the Downtown Memphis Commission. She previously served as chairwoman of the Tennessee Black Caucus of State Legislators from 2017 to 2019. Whereas, among the countless and deserving awards, Senator Akberry has been recognized as Woman of the Year by the National Organization of Black-Elected Legislative Women in 2016 and Legislator of the Year by both the Tennessee Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers and the National Black Caucus of State Legislators in 2019 and 2023 respectively. In 2021, she was appointed by President Joe Biden to serve on the President's Commission on White House Fellowships. Now therefore being resolved by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners that we hereby honor State Senator Akberry.
Well, uh, this has been, and represented the true narrative of our city in Nashville, uh, but certainly being able to work with such extraordinary colleagues as Caucus Chairwoman Lamar and the other members of the Shelby delegation, uh, really allows us to represent and bring back much-needed dollars in policy for Memphis and Shelby County. So thank you, Commissioner Sugarman, for this honor, uh, and certainly to the rest of the commissioners, uh, for this recognition. Thank you.
Relationships, those state relationships that we need so intimately, uh, because we got a lot of important topics that we dealing with here that's gonna need that state involvement. We'll need your leadership, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. Commissioner Caswell?
Again, Senator, thank you for all that you do. I know it's not an easy job when you hear you what our fight is about, and I thank you for that leadership and again, your excellency that you sure, sure, show us from sitting in that seat up there. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Senator Akberry. It is very tough to be in the super minority and, and move the needle on things. I, I really appreciate what you do, and I've, I've got to see you in action on something that was very near and dear to this body, Senate Bill 337. Thank you so much, your, your work getting it passed in the Senate. You, you were that good. So, um, Alicia Lindsay, C.A. Lindsay and I were up there. It's like, we didn't even have to speak because you were so good. So thank you, and I appreciate what you do, and, and, uh, the, being in the super minority up there, I know it's tough, but you are looked highly upon and you're the go-to person, so, um, I commend you and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to join in the, the train of accolades as they're so rightfully deserved. You're just so poised, and just from one elected to another, I just appreciate, um, the way that you just show up in every space that I've ever seen you in, and so I hear nothing but great things about your work and your leadership, and so this is a great honorary. Um, and I just also, I miss Senator Lamar, but I just want to say thank you too. A lot of folks don't know, um, what you mean to the millennial gen- generation. Um, she's one of the first leaders to even just show you what a millennial leader looks like, so thank you to both of y'all for the work that y'all do.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Thornton. Uh, thank you again, Senator, uh, for all your service, uh, and for being here with us this afternoon. Okay, thank you all. Uh, before we go to, to read the consent agenda, we're gonna go to general comment. Uh, first up, we have Joby Kent. All right, Mr. Kent, come on up, uh, name and address, you know, three minutes.
Joe Kent, 5111 Flamingo. The Memphis Zoological Society is part of a public-private operating conspiracy. 1.5 million recurring in additional local funding is not about the animals, conservation, or the babies. It's about rewarding leaders' punk family public-private business interests and gross zoo mismanagement occurring through deficient fundraising and recklessly physical liberal spending increases since 2019. We have 8 million unaccounted for to the Zoo Foundation with unknown board members, while some of you are concerned with less than 100K spent by MSCS on PR. FY 2019 for 24, in a declining attendance environment, uh, all salaries and benefits increased by 81% or 5 million in excess. General management salaries and benefits by 128%, 669K in excess. Visitor services salaries and benefits by 116% and 94% or 842K in excess. The zoo will never pay for itself with 90 million economic impact, which generates 2.7 million local tax revenue. The zoo is at, and on transparency, some of you have struggled with public transparency yourself, but overarching transparency is just not a priority as, as could be expressed through resolution if were a priority for this body. For example, the zoo only sees the zoo as a public asset to receive public funding while not being accountable to the public in fundraising, spending, or through public information request. As a category, generally speaking, public?
Wheeler? Come on down, uh, state your name and address, you know, three minutes.
Good afternoon, Laramie Wheeler, and I work for Just City 240 Madison Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38103. I am here today to share testimonies from people who have lived or do live in the jail at 201 Poplar. These are accounts that they have entrusted to Just City through letters and in-person conversations. Many details in these accounts are consistent over time. While no one has been formally charged or held accountable for the allegations contained in these accounts, their consistency and frequency demand that we pay attention. These are not isolated complaints. They are part of a troubling pattern that raises serious concerns. Dark abandoned holding tank on the lower level south. Took a key out of her pocket, opened the door, pushed me inside in the wheelchair, locked the door. A code blue was never pushed by the officer. The officers be bragging on how they go and do these mental men's for beating on the doors. Officers are beating mentally disabled inmates because they will, 10 a.m., you are not going to get seen by anyone from medical. You cannot get someone to open the door if you're dying.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. Good to hear from you again. I remember what you said a couple Mondays ago. So I'm going to throw something right back at you and I will be asking you and your organization to keep an eye on a particular item that this body did pass, and it deals with law enforcement review. Now, I'm probably one individual that has stated on record that you can support law enforcement, but also walk the same walk by saying that they should be held accountable as well. And when I said I was, but I just want to make sure that the listening public and anybody else, they may have the same views, as you know that we're in budget season. And one item of many that we can definitely discuss, I know that my colleague and I won't speak for her, she can speak for herself, we just want to make sure that that law enforcement review is egregious. But I will say one thing that was egregious was that when my colleague worked two straight years on this initiative, it failed multiple times. It didn't pass until recent, but then the funding didn't show up. It took on a separate environmental item for people to see how the votes went in order to fund the item. But guess what? Both of those items, the 11th floor refused to sign. But after 10 days, it goes into law. So I just want to make sure, and I know my colleague, who was the main sponsor, is going to fight to make sure that it is funded one way, there could be more support to ensure before June 30th that there is a funded source in order to go ahead and start this starting July 1. So you probably already knew about it a little bit, but I just wanted you to know in your last conversation, you talked about some funding of some initiatives, but this is one that took two years. And you see the makeup of this body. Should it really have taken two years? I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think you're doing it in a very effective way. So just if you can just communicate that back to the persons that are relying on Just City to be able to be heard, this is way more efficient than sending us the letters. Oftentimes, those get overlooked and I just appreciate you for just elevating their voices. Can you scan the, each time, I don't know how long you're going to continue to do this, but each time you have a testimony that you are presenting to us, scan it to us and CC the commissioners, the mayor, and the sheriff. And, you know, ask, you know, what I hear you saying are many different procedural things that I question. And just what is the procedure? What is the procedure as you see different policies being violated? So that we can hear if there is any type of additional support that we can offer them or that they need to be able to staff or address issues that they're finding. So I would just be curious, like, what does an investigation look like to be able to, you know, validate these testimonies? Because definitely someone, you know, undeniably is listening in, and this could easily get picked up by the media and be a negative perception of how we're handling our facilities and operations. So I hope to the leaders over the respective facilities that they actually are paying attention and that they would be proactive to respond to what we're hearing, other experiences of not only just the people being housed there, but our staff. You know, it sounds like it's a very toxic and distressing environment. So, you know, to our leaders, whether that be Director Alexander or Sheriff Bonner, I would like to hear a response. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Wheeler, for being here today. Commissioners, please take three minutes to review the consent agenda and let us know if there are any items you wish to pull.
Chair, while we're doing that, can I do a point of information and ask you a question? There's probably some rule that I overlooked, but is there a reason why item number 42 in audit?
All right. Commissioner Caswell?
Yes, sir. Item number 22.
Okay, 22. Thank you. Commissioner Sugarman?
Number five.
Number five?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ford?
Six, seven, and eight.
Okay, six, seven, and eight. Thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Did she say 25? Or 25, 37, and 38?
Sorry, I said, so 25?
37 and 38. 37 and 38.
Okay, those will be on the regular agenda, so we'll get those. Yeah, no, no problem. Okay. Commissioner Thornton?
14.
14, okay.
14, 16, 19, 26, and 27.
Okay. Sorry, say those again. 14, 16. What was the next one? 19?
19, 26, and 27.
All right. So we're pulling 5, 6, 7, 8, 14, 16, 19, 22, 25, 26, 27. All right, Madam? Yep. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the consent agenda with the exception of the items pulled.
Yes, sir. Items nine and 10 come from the Budget and Finance Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item nine is a resolution $198.03 in approving the purchase of kiosks with Advanced Kiosk DBA H32 Design and Development LLC in a total amount not to exceed $155,198.03. Appropriation expenditure of such funds for a total amount not to exceed $155,198.03, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay-Bibbs. Items 12 and 13 come from the Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Bradford. Item 12 is a resolution approving a contract with Fisher &amp; Arnold, Inc. for a total amount not to exceed $561,351.80 for engineering design services for replacement of the bridge on Sledge Road over Big Creek overflow, appropriating said funds commencing upon execution and continuing until June 30th, 2025, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms. This item requires an appropriation of FY 2025 Roads, Bridges, and Engineering State Gas Tax Funds in the amount of $561,361.80, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr. Item 13 is a resolution approving the issuance of a purchase order to Allen J. Automotive Management, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $480,463 for the purpose of procuring replacement vehicles for various county departments. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of FY 2025 Fleet Services Vehicle Replacement Funds in the amount of $480,463, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr. Item 15 and 17 come from the Hospitals and Health Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay-Bibbs. Item 15 is a resolution to amend the FY 2025 Shelby County Health Department Grant Fund Operating Budget in the amount of $40,000 for a total contract amount of $951,800 to provide a plethora of health services for the citizens of Shelby County, such as community development and family planning services for the period beginning September 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. This item requires the appropriation expenditure of state grant funds in the amount of $40,000, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay-Bibbs. Item 17 is a resolution to request a 12-month extension for the contract with West Tennessee Regional Forensic Center in an amount not to exceed $10,027,115,000. This extension will allow sufficient time to complete the re-issuance of the Request for Proposal, RFP, conduct the scoring process, finalize the contracting process with the selected vendor, and manage the transition if a new vendor is chosen. The purpose of this request is to ensure that both the contractors and the Shelby County Health Department have ample time to select the best vendor to operate the West Tennessee Regional Forensic Center. This item requires the expenditure of FY 25 General Operating Funds in an amount not to exceed $10,027,115,000, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay-Bibbs. Items 18 and 20 through 22 come from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Wright. Item 19 is a resolution approving, oh, excuse me. Item 18 is a resolution approving a contract between Shelby County Government and Romain Companies for the emergency purchase and installation of shower system at Shelby County Jail on behalf of the Shelby County Sheriff's Office in the amount not to exceed $79,200, sponsored by Commissioner McWright. Item 20 is a resolution approving a contract with Cove Corporation in the amount of $79,936 for the purchase of telephone logging recorder support and maintenance with options to renew for two additional one-year periods subject to funding. This item requires the expenditure of FY 2025 Sheriff's Office Operating Budget in an amount not to exceed $79,936, sponsored by Commissioner McWright. Oh, 22 is pulled, okay. Items 23 through 25 come from the General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item 23 is a resolution approving the election of Notaries Public for Appointment and Reappointment for Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Item 24 is a resolution approving a 90-day extension with Corville Corporation for Comprehensive On-the-Job Entry Administrative Services effective July 1, 2025 through September 30th, 2025. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of county on-the-job entry funds in an amount not to exceed $52,000, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Item 25 is a resolution... No? That's pulled too? Okay, so 28. Item 28 comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Brooks as acting chair. Item 28 is a resolution extending the fiscal year 2025 Milton Community Enhancement Program CEP grant deadlines to June 18, 2025 for committee and June 23, 2025 for commission, sponsored by Chairman Michael Wiley.
Okay. Thanks so much. If we can get a mover and second round on the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Madam Clerk, please press the screen to vote on the consent agenda minus the items pulled. All right. We can close the screen and record the vote.
We have high votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, and Chairman Wiley. Have nine high votes.
All right. Consent passes. Item number five.
Item five comes from the Land Use Planning, Transportation, and Code Enforcement Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Avant. Item five is a resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Unified Development Code of the County of Shelby and the City of Memphis, Tennessee, granting a planned development for land located at Zero Forest Hill Irene Road, known as Case Number PD 2025-001CO, sponsored by Commissioner Shante Avant.
Item five is moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Bradford, are you in this committee? Can you give us a committee report?
Yes, committee met, and this comes down to the favorable recommendation. I believe Commissioner Sugarman was in the queue, but it looks like our queue got cleared.
Okay. Anyone in the queue? Commissioner Sugarman?
Yes, Chair. We have the presenters. I'd like them to present the rezoning for the record before we, to make a motion on this. And also, I just want to say for the record that I spoke to, I communicated with the mayor of Cogeville, and she was not aware. And so I just want to say this on record that on Wednesday, I was not supported for my own district. I was very disappointed because every time we have something in, especially rezoning in other commissioners' districts, they are respected. And I was totally disrespected on Wednesday. I'm saying this for the record because my district extends beyond just Hickory Hill. There are other areas as well. And as I stated last Wednesday, I was not aware of the rezoning, and I wanted more information. And it's not that I didn't support it. I wanted more information for my district. So when they come to me and say, why did you support this?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Yeah, DPD, if you want to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Commissioner Sugarman?